It is seven one, we do have a quorum, so it's up to you if you wanted to get it or not.
Uh yeah, I mean, they're not excluded from discussions if we start, right? Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and get started. We have a quorum, I think that's all we need.
So we are live.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, May fourth. We'll start off with roll call, please.
Chair Dennison.
Here.
Vice Chair Hutt. Commissioners Pepsner. Simcock.
Here.
And you.
Here.
All right, first up, I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Any second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have approval of the minutes of the March second, twenty twenty-three meeting. Are there any changes recommended to the minutes?
I didn't have any edits.
All right, then I'll look for a motion to approve as presented.
I move to approve the minutes as of as presented.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Abstentions? All right, carries three ayes and one abstention. Next up is the Council Liaison Report. Our councilperson is attending a city government meeting where one of the one of the city team is actually receiving an award. Mr. Carlson is receiving an award tonight, so I believe that Councilmember Lowe will not be with us. So at this time, we will take community input from any person. Any person may address the Planning Commission concerning an item that is not on the agenda. The Commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the Commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Would anyone like to come before us for an item that is not on the agenda? All right, hearing none. I believe that we have a presentation from Madam City Attorney.
So we are going to continue that item. City Attorney Gary Gosian wanted to be able to present the legislative update, which would be the third legislative update for a number of the bills that were passed. At so we're going to just continue that item to our May eighteenth date. But actually, at this time, I wanted to introduce a staff, fairly new staff person who has joined us. Jamie Wayne. Up at the podium, up at the podium.
Hi, my name is Jamie, I'm the planning technician here at the City of Sierra Madre.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Jamie's been with us for about six months, so you'll start seeing him probably bring some projects forward. He started off actually as an administrative intern here, and we ended up bringing him on board.
That's great, congratulations, welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda, we have a public hearing. We'll take first a disclosure of any site visits or and ex parte contacts.
None.
No site visits, any site visits?
I visited both sites, but I didn't speak with anybody.
I drove by both sites from looked at from the outside. I drove by both sites and looked at them from the outside.
Same here, I drove by, spoke to nobody.
Yep, I visited both sites and spoke to nobody. All right, so first up is a public hearing, tentative parcel map twenty-two dash zero one, a discretionary demolition permit, DDP twenty-three dash zero two, and conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero one, a request to allow demolition of a one existing dwelling unit and subdivide an existing multifamily residential parcel into three-unit condominium project.
And we have a presentation by Senior Planner Lynn.
Good evening Chair, Vice Chairs, and Planning Commissioners. So the Planning Commission this evening will be considering the application for the tentative tract map discretionary demolition permit and a conditional use permit. The property is located at one hundred eighty-two West Highland. The project is on located on the south side of Highland Avenue, west of Auburn and east of Hermosa Avenue, right across the way from elementary Sierra Madre Elementary School and next to the Highland Muse Project. The parcel measures eleven thousand nine hundred and four square feet in the R three thirteen multifamily residential zone and is it is designated as a residential high-density use in the general plan. The property is surrounded by multifamily and institution institutional zones. The app, here are the existing photographs of the site that you can see that Sierra Madre School is across Highland and Highland Muse is right next to the project site. The applicant, the applicant is requesting to subdivide the property, demolish the existing structures for a three-unit condominium project. Pursuant to the municipal code, the Planning Commission shall hold a public hearing on the tentative parcel map, require a conditional use permit for all condominium project, and no structures which was constructed seventy-five years or more shall be demolished without a discretionary discretionary demolition permit. The Housing Accountable Act applies to this project where the housing development consists of more than one residential unit. A discretionary demolition discretionary design review permit will not be applicable to this application. The project also qualifies for the Class fifteen and Class three categorical exemption for the minor land division and the new construction or conversion of a small structure under the California Environmental Quality Act. Before I go into the the next slide, I'd like to point out that the architect has provided you with an updated arborist report and the site plans placed on the dais before you. This is regarding the oak tree in the parkway that the up the updated proposal is to relocate the oak tree on the parkway. Staff has reviewed the application and it is the opinion of the arborist that the tree location will likely to be successful. The applicant shall continue work with Public Works and complies with the city's ordinance and mitigation requirement. Should the relocated tree not survive the first four years, a mitigation of four to one shall be applied. So on the site plan, there's also another protected specimen tree on the west boundary that is a sixteen-inch oak tree that the applicant is proposing to protect and trim. The arborist report determined that the demolition and construction activities are expected to have minor impact on the protected trees. The arborist list recommendation guidelines and provide them in the report to be followed. Here are the site photograph of the existing structure. The property is currently developed with one single-family structure of six hundred and sixteen square feet and a storage right next to it. Pictures on the right shows the sixteen-inch oak tree right at the property line next to the Highland Muse Bill project. The project data shows that this is a fully compliant project. It complies with the lot coverage, building height, all the setbacks, the density floor area ratio. It provided more than required open space for each unit and also it provides a two-car garage per unit. Tentative parcel map is consistent with the general plan as it continues the existing part pattern of residential housing development. The condominium contemplates the land in joint ownership without altering the physical dimension of the lot. The tentative parcel map demonstrates that the infill development is physically suitable to the development of three units in a three separate structure with the density that's less than thirteen unit per acre. Each dwelling can be developed in compliance with the zoning and development standard. It provides adequate access to Highland Avenue and the driveway is twenty-three feet wide. The parcel map demonstrates that the subdivision does not conflict with any public utility or easement. The proposed grading and drainage plan shows that the site elevation change from the north to the south, gradually sloping about ten feet in difference. The area drain, drain pipe, sun pump are located on the southern side of the boundary. The storm water encashment basin is under the driveway. The project is subject to the low-impact development ordinance and it will comply with LID. This is the proposed site plan that shows that the rectangular lot is physical physically suitable for the type of development. It provides private and common open spaces that are incorporated into the project design, exceeding the required five hundred square feet for each unit. The vehicle access from Highland demonstrate a twenty feet wide to twenty-seven feet wide, which complies with the requirement from the fire marshal. It also provides a large setback for the existing oak tree. These separate units are orientated in north-south orientation with eighteen to twenty-one feet building separation. Provided by the architect are the floor plans of each unit. Each condominium unit consists of three bedroom, two bath, a powder room on the lower floor ranging from two thousand one hundred and thirty-one to two thousand three hundred and forty-six square feet in floor area. It includes the two-car garage on the ground floor. Building sections and elevation shows that the floor-to-ceiling height is eight feet. The building height to the top of the ridge is twenty-four feet ten inches. The elevation shows that it is designed in a contemporary farmhouse architectural style. It incorporate the A shape pitch gable roof, vertical siding on the exterior overlay. Plenty of windows, cover front porch, and a carriage-style garage doors. The elevation for the first and the second structure are identical and the rear structure is a little bit smaller. The exterior is finished with white color and charcoal texture roof, which are consistent with the contemporary farmhouse design. The design is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and you can see that from the overall west elevation. And there is a rendering from the west side looking from the Highland Muse Project. The oak tree and the pine tree are removed, the vegetation are removed to show the elevation and the detail. This is the rendering from the street view. It demonstrates that the project is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. It's promoting a new development that is compatible in scale and it ties well with the Highland Muse Project. The application has been reviewed by Planning and Public Works Director, Fire Chief, Fire Marshal, Police Captain, and City Engineers. And their comments are either incorporate into the design or included in the conditions of approval. Finding has to be made in order to approve the project. The findings are in the packet for the Planning Commission to make a decision. Here's are the summaries of the finding that the tentative parcel map is consistent with the Sierra Madre General Plan and the subdivision is consistent with the Sierra Madre General Plan. The site is physically suitable for the density and for the condominium development. The subdivision is not likely to cause any environmental damage or pose any threat to wildlife habitats. The design is not likely to cause any serious public health problems and the design is does not have any conflict with public utility or easement. This project has no local or state or national historic significance based on the report from Safos Environmental and there is a demonstrated need for the demolition activity. The project is adequate in size, shape, and there is a demonstrated need for the use of the requested. This project is this project would be benefit to the interest of the public and convenience. Furthermore, the proposed project creates opportunities for the city to increase the net number of residential unit by two and contribute to the city's obligation to satisfy the regional housing allocation of a market-rate housing. We're doing our part to allow housing options for all members of the community, contributing to the housing production necessary to address the California housing crisis. Lastly, the Housing Accountability Act applies to this project. If this is a housing development project that the Planning Commission finds will not have a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact on the public health and safety, then the grounds for disapproval may not be made upon this basis, nor shall the project be conditioned to require development at a lower density. Alternative before the Planning Commission this evening is to adopt the Resolution twenty-three dash nine as presented recommending approval to the City Council to conditional conditionally approve the tentative tract map twenty-two dash two and conditionally approve the discretionary demolition permit and the discretionary conditional use permit or recommend approval with modification or recommend denial of the request. Lastly, or to continue the public hearing, providing directions to the staff and the applicant. That concludes my presentation, oh, sorry. The staff is recommending that the Planning Commission to approve the project, make recommendation to the City Council to conditionally approve tentative tract map and approving the discretionary demolition permit and conditional use permit. Now, that concludes my presentation and the architect is present for any questions you might have and I'll be answer any questions you might have for the staff.
Questions for staff?
I I have one question. On the conditions of approval, I see the utilities of trenching is required and connecting the public sewer, but I didn't see one about undergrounding all the other utilities. Is that a requirement?
That will not be the requirement, but it will be a requirement that we could put on the conditions of approval. And it will be based on the Southern California Edison's evaluation. Sometimes we do put it in the condition of approval and it was denied by Edison, but we can always so always include it.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
As far as the LID development, is it just the porous driveway and the catchment basin? Or does the roof have, it's not required to have roof catchment, or is that discretionary?
It's all based on the the plans that will be submitted, the construction drawing that will be submitted to the Public Works Department at a later time. So conceptually, they are only proposing the encashment basin and also the area drain.
Okay, but we could require that, okay?
Um, I thought I heard you say that we're dividing this into three parcels and then they're going to remain under single ownership. Did I hear that right?
No, so it will divide it in joint ownership, so that meaning they're dividing the air and space.
Cause it's a condo.
So it's a condominium project versus a separate parcel.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Nope.
All right. Does the architect want to make a presentation? Not not required to, just optional. No? All right, then we will bring it back to the Planning Commission for deliberation. After we do public comment. At this time, we will take public comment for anybody who would like to speak on this specific agenda item. Please keep your comments to no more than three minutes. All right.
I'm I was wondering if if I can ask the applicant or the architect a question. I was just wondering if if you all had looked at doing four units on the property because the zoning allows for four units and why you decided to do three instead of four?
Oh, hi, good evening, everybody. We are designing three because we don't want to be very too much crowd on the lot. So we are doing three, so every every unit can have plenty of outdoor space.
Okay.
I did have a question. It looks like there was concrete down the middle of the driveway with permeable pavers around it. I just wondered why not do all permeable pavers to collect even more rather than having the concrete?
Um, because the it's for the fire truck to drive on it, so there has a load-bearing capacity required.
Okay. Gotcha, okay.
I just wanna confirm that I think on one of your sheets where you have your lighting plan, uh, A two point four. So you're showing three different types of lights on the light fixture reference. And I I think I clearly see that you're differentiating between the fixtures, but I just wanna confirm that the first one that's on the left, that's only being used on the new CMU wall. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's correct.
Okay, and then the one on the furthest right are the ones that are being used at the doors that are facing the neighbors?
Um, it's it's gonna be at the door, but not facing the neighbors.
Uh, actually, this one will be at door door and the garage door, so not facing to the neighbors, this one.
Cause you have a door facing the neighbors, right, on unit one?
Unit one.
Uh, the unit one, it, um.
There's no door there?
The unit one, actually, our, oh, yes, the garage door, yeah, is facing the driveway.
There's no door to the neighbor on the other side?
Oh, there's a small entrance door, uh, small entrance door.
Uh, actually, our front door for the unit one is faced the street.
Right, not the front door, don't you have a side door out there?
Yeah, we have a side door.
Yeah, you have a side door with your light fixture that's required by code. I'm just wanna confirm that it's the one with the gooseneck coming down,
Oh, yeah.
not facing out with the LED blasting the neighbor.
Hmm, yeah, yes, correct.
To confirm, okay.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, so we will bring it back to deliberation then. Who would like to start? Commissioner, you?
Actually, I don't have too many comments on this one. I think it's, um, it's designed in a way that it's trying to take into account a lot of the architectural sort of design aspects of stepping back from the street on the first unit. My guess is that on this lot, they would have probably mirrored the units on the other side of the lot because of the oak tree itself, they needed to come back on this side. Cause I think on the street and sort of the massing diagram, you have the massing driveway and then, you know, I think it would have made more sense to balance it out on the other side, but because of the existing oak tree, I think they had to put everything on this side, especially with that level change, I think it would have been nicer not to have the mass next to the the two and a half feet that drops down to the neighbor, but those are the site conditions. The units themselves, I think they they work well. There is some outdoor space that's separating between them. It looks like they're using materials that are compatible with the neighborhood and what they're trying to do. I'm not, maybe I can, I wanna hear kind of what you guys are thinking as well. I see the reason why they have that three-foot CMU wall right at the beginning of the entrance, but I think it kind of divides up that space a little bit and I wanna see what your take is on that. It's probably to protect from cars coming into that space, but I'm wondering what you're thinking. But other than that, I don't have any objections to the project, so.
Commissioner Simcock?
Um, I, yeah, no, I I I I think there, I think it fits the neighborhood. I think it fits Sierra Madre. I agree with the the side, it would, I think it would be great if you could go to the other side, but that tree is is right there and it's a milk tree, so there's not much you can do with that. I don't really have anything else.
Um, yeah, I I agree, I think it fits with the neighborhood. It, you know, in in a few years, you you won't be able to distinguish it a whole bunch from the surrounding projects. So it's, I think.
So it's, I think it fits in very nicely. Also note that, as said in the intro presentation, we don't have design review over multifamily anymore because of the way state law works. So our review approval is based on the subdivision findings and the CUP findings, and I think those all easily can be met. I would like to add to the conditions of approval that all the utilities be undergrounded. I think you're gonna be building all new anyhow, and you're gonna be trenching for sewer, so it's not gonna add a lot of cost, but it's gonna improve the look and feel of the development. So I think we should add that condition.
I'm glad they're putting three rather than four. Appreciate them not trying to cram more onto the space because we have so little discretion as far as that goes. It's not a hard, I mean, you guys might want to sound in on this, but in terms of the catchment from the roofs to have it track into the existing catchment basement, I don't know how onerous that is. I don't really put, I'm not a big, you know, I don't really have a hard, fast opinion about it because, you know, these days everyone wants to catch the gray water from the washing machine and everything else. But I don't, if it's not too onerous, I don't, I think that would be one improvement for the LID requirements that would only, you know, enhance what they've already done. Other than the design, everything else looks good, and I can make the findings. Actually, I want to ask Mr., what do you think about catching things from the roof construction wise? Is that with the catch-
I always thought that was a requirement, so.
Well, they said it was, yeah, we can, it's optional, but.
I think part of that, I mean, from what my experience is that you would have to catch it. I mean, that's a large portion of the water that's falling on the site, and it's easiest way to collect it, right? And so, and you're gonna be putting in a retention system anyway, so.
So you can attach it and dig it when you're doing everything at once? And have the, so it's just a spout that goes down for wherever your downspouts are and things like that?
I think your firehouse, I remember.
Yeah, my understanding is that you have to meet the LID requirements. So it's not required, but it's the easiest way to meet the LID requirements, so typically people do it.
Yeah, well, I thought the catchment basin alone was, you know, since it's so, catching such a big volume of the groundwater and anything that comes that way would meet the requirement, kind of like a one size fits all kind of a thing, and the other would just be additional, so.
And it's good practice, because what else is, where is the water gonna go? You'll have downspouts and then what?
Right.
It's gonna go to the bottom house.
Yes, gotta drain someplace.
The old fashioned way.
I'm just thinking cost wise, I think it's gonna be pretty, you know, this is a costly thing, and I don't like to put onerous requirements for things like that. I mean, make them build a big swell with a river, you know, into the, you know, I mean, all that kind of design stuff. If they're doing it from scratch, then I have no problem with it, but, okay. So maybe I'd like to add that as a requirement to catch the downspout flow from the roof into the catch basement.
All right, I agree with, with what's been said. Although I think, and maybe I heard this differently. I thought what I heard was they're going to have to comply with the LID requirements, and if they don't have sufficient calculations from the way that they've done the permeable ground, that they're gonna have to find another way to do it, which would, the only other way would be, it would be to catch it that way. So as long as they're compliant with LID, I don't think that we need to add specificity about how they accomplish that.
Okay.
Am I thinking about that right, city staff?
Yes.
I'm not opposed to it, I just, I think I'd rather give them the choice of how they comply.
All right.
That's fair.
Sure.
And I completely agree with undergrounding, especially with all the trees that are around there and the windstorms that happen. I think that the three foot wall is a great idea where it is, especially with the amount of traffic there, having just come from there tonight. I can, I too can make all the findings. I think it fits in with the limited purview we have of approval. So I think I would look for a motion to approve.
If there's no further deliberation, I'll move to approve Planning Commission Resolution twenty-three oh nine recommending approval to the city council of tentative track map twenty-two oh one with the additional condition of approval that we talked about, about undergrounding the utilities.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, next up, we have a nomination for local historic cultural landmark status to designate the residential property located at six seventeen and six nineteen West Montecito Avenue as the Osgood House. Does city staff have a presentation?
We have a presentation from Associate Planner Wolf. Good evening, Chair Dennison and Planning Commission. Tonight, the commission will be reviewing the historic designation for the Osgood House located at six fifteen through six nineteen West Montecito Avenue. Property is located on West Montecito Avenue, on the north side of it, between North Sunnyside Avenue and Michelinda. Has a land use designation of residential low density with a zone of one family residential, a lot size of seventeen thousand five oh eight square feet, and it was built between nineteen ten and nineteen twenty-eight. Of note, it is an existing multifamily property. And on the property you see addressed six fifteen through six nineteen. Six fifteen is at the north end at the rear of the property. Six nineteen is in addition of the original six seventeen building. And in addition to those buildings, there is a large wooden garage and a shed at the rear of the property. The original residence was built in nineteen ten, which is represented as six seventeen, and then in nineteen twenty-three, six fifteen was constructed. In nineteen twenty-four, the wooden garage was built. Then in nineteen twenty-eight, a portion of six seventeen was converted along with an addition to create six nineteen. Then in nineteen ninety-eight, a pergola was built to help support the wisteria growing on the property. Six fifteen is noted as having far less distinctive character in vernacular style and is thus not recommended by staff to be included in, for nomination as a historic cultural landmark. And that notation is in Attachment D of the agenda packet on page ninety-three. See last sentence of item B ten. So the focus of this presentation hereon will be about the main building addressed at six seventeen and six nineteen, as well as the original owners of the property. So here pictured on the slide is Josiah and Caroline Osgood on the steps of six seventeen West Montecito Avenue. The application for historic nomination has included the finding for historic significance due to persons of significant, significance to the history of Sierra Madre and its early development. The residence addressed at both six seventeen and six nineteen West Montecito Avenue is associated with a productive life of the Osgood family. Mrs. Caroline L. Osgood contributed as the first president and founder of the Sierra Madre Women's Club. Husband Captain J.A. Osgood contributed in making the first survey of land on Grandview tract, which bears the inscription J.A. Osgood Surveyor, May twenty-fourth, eighteen eighty-seven, and was one of the original organizers of the First National Bank in Sierra Madre. Pictured on this slide on the left is Caroline Osgood with shovel and fellow members of the women's club planting wisteria at the women's clubhouse. This picture circa nineteen twenty-three, nineteen twenty-four. To the right of that is a portrait of Caroline Osgood. The application has also presented a finding for architectural significant which embodies distinctive character style of craftsman architecture. And as I explained before, it's originally built in nineteen twenty-eight, nineteen ten through nineteen twenty-eight. Its character defining features include, to the original structure, its overall elements being flaring side gables, roof clad in composition tiles, ornamental flying rafters, deep side eaves, horizontal clapboard siding with facade elements including central shed roof, dormer with balcony clad in wood shingles, a set of three double hung windows, a porch enclosed by a rail with square balusters and supported by wide rectilinear clapboard clad posts, a wide entry door with double hung windows on each side, and a French door within its porch. To the nineteen twenty-eight addition, which is addressed at six nineteen West Montecito Avenue, its overall character defining features include the gable roof clad in composition tiles, central louvered vent below gable eaves, exposed rafters, the same horizontal clap siding as six seventeen. Its facade elements include shed roof over bay window and a bay window with a set of three casement windows. And here in the following slides, you see pictured those elements. On the top left is six seventeen's entrance. You see the entrance flanked on either side by the casement windows. On the top right picture there is the porch on the east side of the property to the right of the entrance. The lower left picture is just a photo of the rear of the structure. And the lower right is of the east side of the building where the pergola is and the wisteria is growing. Moving on to six nineteen, which is the addition, on the top left, you see the nineteen twenty-eight enclosure of the original porch, which inside of it is the living room of six nineteen with its entrance at the porch of, commonly shared by six seventeen. The top center photo is the six nineteen enclosure of an alternate angle. Top right is again six one nine, its rear utility closet is inside. The bottom left photo is the nineteen twenty-eight addition kitchen nook inside on that photo. And the bottom center and bottom right are both part of the nineteen twenty-eight addition extending toward the rear with, again, the kitchen nook inside that. And then, just want to backtrack real quick to say that on the rear here on the bottom left photo, the portion with the bedroom inside of six one nine can be seen, kind of the most visible part on the ground floor. So the alternatives for the planning commission tonight are to adopt Planning Commission Resolution twenty-three oh seven as presented, and this is actually a modification of the applicant's request. It recommends the city council conditionally approve the request designating six one seven and six one nine West Montecito Avenue as an historic cultural landmark. This is modifying from the applicant's request that includes six one five in that designation. Planning commission may also approve the planning commission resolution with modifications. It may recommend the city council deny the request identifying findings that the planning commission cannot make in the basis for rejecting those findings or continue the public hearing providing direction to staff and the applicant. Staff's recommendation is to adopt Planning Commission Resolution twenty-three oh seven as presented. That concludes my presentation, and tonight the historian is present, should the commission have any questions?
Are there any questions of staff?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, so you're recommending we designate a historic six seventeen and six nineteen, but not six fifteen, and then also not the pergola or the garage? Right? Because the pergola is not in the period of significance, this is a later add-on?
Typically, the way I understand historic destinations to work is it's identified by address of property. Since the pergola was, did not have its own address, I thought it was implied that six one seven and six one seven, or six one nine would include its pergola attached to it.
Right, but in the historic, or the materials, it talks about the period of significance being nineteen twenty to nineteen twenty-eight, and the pergola was added much more recently, I don't remember the year. So, I mean, I don't think it would cause a problem to the historic fabric if they took the pergola off.
That would be the assumption, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions of staff? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will take public comment from anybody who would like to speak to this specific agenda item.
Good evening, Carrie Chastain with Sappus Environmental. I'm, as Josh just said, I'm available to answer any questions. In addition to applying for the landmark application, the owners have also submitted a Mills Act application which will further preserve and maintain the building. And the owners are here, and they wish to speak about how much they love their property and how excited they are about preserving it.
Hello, I'm Sarah, this is Jeff. I come from an architectural background, so finding a house, you know, that doesn't just have the significance of, you know, the beauty of the craftsmen, but also has the historic significance was pretty magical, and it would be really sad to ever see something, you know, it's, it has such a beautiful, it's kind of what Sierra Madre is with all these historical homes. So it'd be really sad not to have it be there anymore. So we, you know, this is an attempt to preserve this, and we think it's a really magical space, so. That's, that's where we are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wait, can I ask you a question? Are you okay with just designated six seventeen and six nineteen and not six fifteen?
I, you know, I think that, I think six, it would be nice that six fifteen was designated as well because I feel like it has the characteristics, it's kind of, it tells a story about the property. It's, you know, I could imagine the horses and carriages still going back there. You know, the garage was probably a carriage house back in the day. And I feel like they, they give presence to each other. I, I know that some of you might have walked the property, so I don't know if any of you saw that, but I, it'd be sad for that to come down as well. I think it gives presence to the property, that's just my opinion.
And six fifteen was built also in the period of significance, in the twenties? Or is it a later addition?
I think it was after seventeen and before nineteen.
Yeah, it was, in the twenties.
So, okay, thank you.
I had one question. How, when did you, when did you buy the property? How long have you lived there?
We bought the property two years ago, September, yeah.
So all these estimates, you know, for repairs and things, is it, are most of them needed?
I think all of them are needed because, you know, we, we did have a good, sorry?
It has old gravity furnaces, you're gonna have to replace it with this, I mean.
Yeah, and it has, like, we've taken some of the plates off, and it has some of the older wiring, which is a fire hazard. I believe, you know, if you look at the rear of the property, somebody replaced the rear windows with, like, plastic windows. I think those should not stay on the property. I don't think it helps with the significance from the exterior. The sashes, you know, there's so many original windows, and a lot of them are in decent shape, but they have to have some maintenance in their movement because they start to, you know, collect water and things start to happen when you start pulling on them. So I think that everything we're doing is.
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm just wondering, since you just got it two years ago, I mean, the list here is, is ridiculous. I mean, it's like fifty thousand for this, forty thousand for that, thirty thousand for this, my goodness, you know? Just the HVXC and the one unit is estimated at thirty-four thousand, so I don't envy you the task, so. Okay, that's all, I just wanted to know how much work, work in progress.
Would anyone else like to comment on this agenda item? Hearing none, I will bring it back for deliberation from the commission. Start to my left.
Sure. Well, with all the work they got to do, if they want to make it historical, that's fine by me. I think it meets the historical requirements for, especially for our town. And if they want to maintain what's there, more power to them. I mean, I hate to say, it sounds like it'd almost be cheaper to bulldoze it, put a new house up. No offense, so if you want to preserve it, then you should get every help possible to make, if you want to create it historical, every discount. So I'm in favor. And as far as the last, the one building, I didn't see it, so I don't have strong feelings either way. If there are preferences to have it designated, that's okay by me.
Yeah, I, I always am happy to see people take on historic buildings and try to restore them and bring them back to a glorious state. It's really what makes the character of the town wonderful. And I'm sure you're right, Bill, that it would be cheaper to just bulldoze the whole thing and start over, but. thing and start over, but I'm very, very happy that you're not. So I, I think that's wonderful. I, I think we've got architectural significance and cultural significance, so that even if 615 doesn't have the same architectural significance, it still has the cultural significance. It comes at the same time, it's part of the setting. I, I can support designating all three of the structures.
No, I, I, I do appreciate that you didn't buy it and hit it with a bulldozer and, you know, put a five thousand square foot brand-new square house on it. The, I, I easily see the, the architecture for the original 617. And then 619's a little bit different, but, you know, it was added in the time period, so it's time correct. It's, it's not, I don't see anything wrong with that. And again, yeah, 615, it's different. It doesn't quite have the craftsman look to it, it has some craftsman windows and features and differences to that, so I can see, I could see the, the point of maybe not wanting to include it. But, you know, I, I think, again, it's, it's part of the property. It's been part of the property for so long that if, if you want to keep that property look and feel that it's had for, I don't know, almost a hundred years, we just do the whole thing and it would be included.
I, I think I concur with a lot of the points. I commend you for the task that you've taken on. It's definitely a labor of love. It's not, you know, it's not a sort of money-making kind of thing, so we appreciate that and what it provides for the city and everything, so thank you for that. I, I would also support that 615 be included. I think it's all part of the, to the overall site, so I would support that as well.
Yeah, I, I agree with all of that and I agree with the cultural significance, so I can definitely make the finding on the cultural significance for, including 615 as well. And concur with thanking you for taking this labor of love on to preserve the history of Sierra Madre. So with that, I would look for a motion to, as initially presented, all three parcels.
Yes, I'll, I'll move to adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2307 recommending approval to the City Council of the designation of the Osgood House, but with all three residences at 615, 617, and 619 West Montecito Avenue.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. Next up, we have Planning Commission reports. Do any commissioners have anything to report?
For me?
All right, Planning and Community Preservation Department reports.
So the next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for May 18th. And we've continued the legislative update by City Attorney Gary Gosian to that date. We'll see if we have other items that will be included on that agenda. We have a number of projects in queue and are ready. Applicants have requested postponement on a couple of cases. One of them being is, if you remember, 94 North Baldwin from way back. That's coming back, but as, under a new application.
Was that the T House?
Commercial building, yes. So that's another project that's going to be coming back to us. Also, just wanted to mention...
Exciting by the look of your face.
I just, I remember asking not too long ago, what's going on with that?
That's why I brought it up. It's a new application, demolishing the existing building.
Hooray.
Also, just wanted to point out that on May 9th, the City Council will be considering Alverno Heights Academy. If you recall, the City Council approved that project at, I believe it was the April 11th meeting. Our city attorney felt that it would be better for the City Council to review the resolution and make the final selection. And since then, the appellant and Alverno Heights Academy have had continued deliberations regarding those conditions of approval. And what's a little bit unique in this case is that staff is presenting two City Council resolutions, one from Alverno Heights Academy, one from the appellant for council selection. Just overall, the Planning Commission reviewed that project on, at six public hearings, and City Council will be reviewing it at their sixth meeting as well. Long process.
Yep.
That concludes my presentation.
And you said that was May 9th?
Yes, next Tuesday.
Okay. If there's no other business on the May 18th meeting, are you going to continue the legal presentation to whatever the next meeting is?
We can if the, if the Planning Commission thinks that would be appropriate instead of coming in for twenty minutes.
I think that's the opinion of the Planning Commission.
I'll keep that under advisement.
Thank you. Hearing no other business, I will adjourn to our regularly scheduled meeting of May 18th.
Thank you.
All right.